I would like to call to order the Yuba City City Council Regular Meeting of April 4th, 2017. Roll call, please.
Mayor Cleveland?
Here.
Vice Mayor Diball?
Vice Mayor Diball?
Did that not work? Oh, there it goes.
Okay.
Here.
Councilmember Buckland?
Here.
Councilmember Cardozet?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Okay, I will be delivering the invocation and afterward, I'm asking Timothy Crowhurst to please lead us in the pledge. What? What's going on? Hold on a moment. That even shouldn't be on. That shouldn't even be on.
I thought it was a whole new invocation.
Holy moly, that was interesting. Something I must have tapped on accident earlier. There we go. Wow. Sorry about that. Okay. I'd like to bless you, Lord God, and thank you for being with us this evening. We ask that you give us wisdom, bring the knowledge we need to have understanding on the matters before us this evening. As a council, we are humbled and honored to be here. Our desire is to make decisions that are the best for the people of Yuba City. Please guide our thoughts and actions this evening. I ask this through your living word. Amen.
Amen.
Due to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Boy, that was embarrassing. You never know what happens in life. Modern technology can really throw you some fun ones. Okay, with that, I have a presentation with Tim Crowhurst, Retirement Proclamation. Come on up, Tim. Should be on. There we go. Haven't quite got used to this yet. Okay. First of all, Tim, I will actually hand this proclamation to you. Nice, pretty colored one. Oh, wow, Tim. All the fun, good stuff, pranks, all the wildness you've been. If anybody really knows Tim, wow, he kept the fire stations hopping and wondering what was coming next. This is a great thing and a sad thing for me because I did have lots of fun. First time was when his, he was, one of the ones that was gonna, if he raised a certain amount of money, he was gonna shave off his mustache and I don't know whatever, can't remember everything else, and it literally freaked his children out. One of them cried, one of them just stared. I mean, it was hilarious. And, "Don't ever do that again," type of a thing.
I've been told.
Yeah. So, so that's the kind of thing that Tim is about. It's about community, having fun in the community, making sure that everyone doesn't think too hard of themselves because he just may notch them down a couple, a couple of notches for fun. And it was always in good jest, although got him in trouble a few times. Okay, Timothy Crowhurst. Wow. Tim Crowhurst retired from the Yuba City Fire Department with over 15 years of service to the city of Yuba City and the residents of Sutter County, and over 28 years with the fire service. Tim began his 15-year tenure when the Walton Fire Protection District merged with the Yuba City Fire Department. Tim served 22 years as a member of the Walton Fire Prevention District as a volunteer and full-time firefighter, along with being a seasonal firefighter with the California Department of Forestry, or CAL FIRE. Tim served and participated in every aspect of a modern fire department and played a major role in the department, in the department, the city and the region regarding CPR certifications and training as a lead instructor and coordinator. Tim's 15-year career with the city of Yuba City and his 28 years in the fire service contributed to the growth, success, and professionalism of the Yuba City Fire Department and the firefighting profession. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Stanley Cleveland Jr., Mayor of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby honor Tim Crowhurst for his service to the Yuba City Fire Department, the city of Yuba City, and to the people of Yuba City and Sutter County. Commend him for his 28 years of service. I sincerely urge all residents of the city of Yuba City to join me in recognizing Timothy for all of his contributions and wish him much success and happiness in his well-deserved retirement, then on this fourth day of April, 2017, at the city of Yuba City, county of Sutter, state of California. I will say, he did not go away. He's volunteering and doing stuff, I don't know how extensive it is really yet, with Sutter County again, out in Sutter area. So, it's in his blood, and I'm thankful for that. And, I don't know if I dare give this to you. I was told I had five minutes, I'll keep it short.
No, I was only three.
You can blame Manny, he told me five minutes.
Well, we blame everything on him.
And then he said, "Take it long." No, I just want to thank everybody in the city, Yuba City. I was born and raised here, I grew up here. I have spent 28 years serving this community, and I'm gonna continue doing it. I have truly enjoyed it, I have learned a lot over the years. And, it's all about community. And, I have to tell you, I kinda chuckled when you handed me this. It's very similar to my Yuba City High School diploma case, in color and gold font and everything. I find it funny because when I told my kids I was retiring, they said, "Oh, you're graduating." Yes. So, it's just like graduating, and I'm moving on to other things, and it's gonna be fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And if the other council members have anything that they really want to say, I encourage it, actually.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Have they introduced his family?
Oh, yes, his family.
Yes.
Stand up, ladies and gentlemen, young man, right there. The ones that have put up with him. And the long times that he's been gone at CAL FIRE, because he will spend many, many, many weeks and months with CAL FIRE.
Oh, I'm not going back to CAL FIRE.
No, I mean, you had.
I had.
Yeah.
I'm not going back to, oh, by the way, when I was there, it was CDF.
Yes.
Not CAL FIRE. Three little crazy kids going to school.
CDF, okay.
Yeah. Stan, thank you.
You're welcome. Is Marina here?
Yes.
A little bit of a newer face that I'm not quite used to.
I was gonna do a, get on the line.
Okay, that's, that's the reason. This is a Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, April 2017. We have a proclamation to give to the representatives of, and this is a very important thing. Been working with Martha for a long time, and she seems to get the hooks in people, and anybody that's really had kids, you know, this hits the heart. And, now that I have six grandkids, you know, and very good ones, I'm very pleased. So, but I'll go with this. Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, April 2017, presented to Marina Kavanaugh from Casa de Esperanza. The tragedy of child abuse and neglect affects every community in California and touches the lives of far too many citizens regardless of cultural, ethnic, religious, or socioeconomic level. If our children are to become productive adults, they should have the right to childhood free from neglect, physical abuse, sexual molestation, and exploitation. Early identification and intervention are essential to successfully interrupting the generational cycle of abuse and neglect. Collaboration among professionals, concerned parents, volunteers, and policymakers can help to reduce the level of child abuse and neglect in our communities. And, the Observance of Child Abuse Prevention Month provides an excellent opportunity for all citizens to reflect on this tragic crime while dedicating themselves to taking an active role in child abuse prevention activities in their community. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Stanley Cleveland Jr., Mayor of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire City Council of the city of Yuba City, do hereby proclaim April 2017 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Yuba City, and encourages all residents to join with local community efforts in making sure that every child has the right to grow up in a stable, loving environment free from abuse and neglect, done on this April 4th, 2017, at the city of Yuba City, county of Sutter, state of California. Now, I bet you have something to say.
A little bit.
Good.
I just wanna say thank you for all of your continuing support, everybody here. And I want to say a special thank you to Yuba City Police Department. We have great working together. I've only been at Casa for five years, but we've been here 40 years. So, April is our 40th year. So, I'll be around the next 35, too. And I just want to say thank you for your support.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
An integral part of our community. Thank you. And this next one is an especially monumentous, momentous situation. Alexis Young. Come on forward. California State Champion Female Wrestler. It's great to see you here. These proclamations, gotta read it again, but it's important. This one is awesome. Alexis is one of the upcoming wrestling competitors in the nation and is the state champion of the CIF State Girls Wrestling Championship in Visalia, California, for the 152-pound weight class. Alexis is a junior at River Valley High School and is the River Valley athlete to win, first River Valley athlete to win a state championship in any sport, and the first female wrestler to win a state title in area history. The River Valley High School juniors' record is 42 and 4 for the 2016 and 17 season, with an 80 and 13 overall prep record, including 61 victories via pinfall. That is actually impressive. Alexis has the Appeal Democrats Athlete of the Week on February 27, 2017, recognizing her wrestling accomplishments. Alexis inspires and continues to be a role model for up-and-coming female wrestlers and strives to achieve a national title. And now therefore, be it resolved that I, Stanley Cleveland Jr., Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby honor and congratulate Alexis Young for her sportsmanship, her state title, and becoming the first-ever athlete at River Valley to win a state championship in any sport, and the first female wrestler to win a state title in area history. I sincerely urge all residents of the city of Yuba City to join me in congratulating Alexis Young for accomplishments and wish her much success in the future, then on this fourth day of April, 2017, at the city of Yuba City, county of Sutter, state of California. We also have a little gift bag for you.
Thank you.
And I'll let you speak, if you wish.
Okay.
Awesome.
I have a little card.
Okay, great.
It's an honor to be here today. I am committed to wrestling, and it is my passion. I want to thank all of my coaches, family, and friends for their continual support. That's it. Thank you.
Again, congratulate her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, wrestling was one of my favorite sports in high school. Gymnastics, track, and wrestling, those were the three that I liked, so her record is very impressive. Moving on to public hearings. Rezone of 2.1 acres located on the south side of Woodward Street, west of State Route 99. Presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Arnold Rodriguez Development Services Director. Prior to going into this item today, we have, I would like to introduce our newest team member. Her name's Anna Canalis, she's sitting in the audience this evening. She informed me earlier that today's her very first city council hearing. So, Anna comes to us from, she studied at UC Davis with a degree in landscape architecture. She's currently working on her master's degree over at USC in public administration. So, Anna is joining our team as an assistant planner, and we are extremely grateful. So, if you do happen to see her around City Hall, please welcome her here at the city. So, today's day two, and so far, she told me she's coming back tomorrow, so we're, so very pleased. So, with that being said, the item before you is a rezon application for approximately 2.1 acres. The property itself, it's currently vacant, however, historically, it was used as a landscape materials yard. The property itself is located on Woodward Street, which, it's a very small road, south of Colusa Highway, just west of Highway 99. As you can tell by the aerial photo, the street itself is actually accessed off of Woodward Street, which again, is a small road with direct access to Highway 99. The property is currently planned by the city's general plan for regional commercial uses, however, it's currently zoned light industrial. So, the zoning itself, which would be C3, which is also regional commercial, would bring the land use and the zoning into consistency with one another. The access itself, again, it's off of Woodward, however, for members of the audience and council, the city's general plan currently does identify a potential future road, south of Civic, which would go along where the existing railroad line is at. However, the city's been in discussions with the railroad for an extended period of time, and until that matter is actually resolved, or until the city purchases the property, the access itself would continue to be along Woodward Street. The applicant has not identified a potential user, however, they have indicated that there's a possibility, and I do want to emphasize, so the word possibility, that they are looking at a hotel, however, at this point, no formal applications have been submitted with the city. Couple of things about the C3 Zone District. The C3 Zone District is what's considered the most extensive or the most permissive zoning district in terms of commercial. And, and what that means is that out of all the commercial districts in the city, the C3 Zone District is the district that permits the most uses. For example, it does permit hotels, motels, it permits auto-related uses such as gas stations, convenience stores, alcohol sales, nightclubs, and everything else. A lot, a good part of Colusa Highway is zone C3. For example, if you take a look at the regional mall, catty corner from this site, that's also zone C3. So, again, a good portion of Colusa Highway is currently zone C3, so this would be consistent with the surrounding area. Staff prepared an environmental assessment for the project, and in staff's opinion, this project does qualify under a Class 32 categorical exemption per SEQA, given that the project itself, again, it is consistent with the city's general plan and zoning. It occurs in a largely urbanized area. It's less than five acres in area, again, the site itself is approximately 2.1 acres. There is no, there's no endangered species on the property, and there's no potential significant impact such as noise, light, or traffic, and all public services are available. With that being said, they would have to make potential improvements to Woodward Street and also bring in water and sewer, however, with that being said, there are public services nearby which would make this project inconsistent with the Class 32 exemption with SEQA. So, with that being said, staff recommends that the council open the public hearing, and after consideration, make a determination that the project is, again, exempt pursuant to SEQA guidelines, and that we introduce the ordinance rezoning approximately 2.1 acres and waiving the first reading this evening. This project would be returned to the city council on April 18th. So, with that being said, that concludes staff's presentation.
First of all, are there any questions remaining at this time, council? With that, I will open a public hearing for the proposed rezone of 2.1 acres located on the south side of Woodward Street. If there is any member of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please step up to podium, state your name, and let us know your thoughts.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm Sean Menard with MHM Engineering, and I represent the Gill family. They're the applicant on this project, and they first approached us to rezone this property to, you know, be consistent with the actual general plan designation, regional commercial. So, we went through the process, worked with staff, and so it's a pretty straightforward process right now, so, but I came up here just to answer any questions you may have, but otherwise, we're aware of all the, everything out there, the location of the existing facilities, and also the future alignment of Civic Center Boulevard, and the situation with Caltrans. So, we've made all of the contacts with Caltrans, and we have additional meetings to further develop what we can do and use this site for, so. But if you have any questions, I can try to answer them for you.
Not hearing any?
Right.
Thank you very much, Sean. Hearing no further comment from the public, gonna close the public hearing, bring it back to the council, and discussion or motion, or action?
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to do staff's recommendation and waive the first reading.
That'd be A and B. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing no opposition, we have a unanimous vote. Thank you. Moving on to item number five, the Residential Resurfacing Project Award.
Good evening, Mayor Cleveland, members of the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Item I have before you is a, the award of the Residential Resurfacing Project. The city, city staff has been working on this, it's part of one of our annual maintenance projects. This one, with the weather, from the, from this recent winter, it was kinda delayed, where we put it together late last summer, and so we bid it during the wintertime to try to maximize the bid cost. And so what we have is, we've grouped a lot of different work for maintenance work, which involves ADA ramp replacement, some asphalt overlays on East Onset Road and Pease Road with rubber chip seal, slurry seal, and some shoulder work. And so it's a pretty, pretty good-sized project, about 1.3, 1.4 million dollars. We bid the project February, March, we received six bids. Valley Slurry Seal International, VSS International, out of West SAC was the low bid. They came in a little bit under engineer's estimate, which was nice to see. Construction, for total construction, with little contingency and project management, we're looking at a price around 1.5. The majority of the cost is coming from local tax, local funds, gas tax. We're using some franchise fees from Recology, and we also picked up a little CalRecycle Rubber Grant that helps offset the rubber cap seal products for $70,000. We're looking to start as soon as possible and get it done early summer. So, with that, I'd like to recommend, well, I'd also like to mention, for closing, that we're also partnering with, with Sutter County on Pease Road, the north half of Pease Road from Stabler to 220 there, is in their jurisdiction. And so we're combining it to make it one project, and they'll reimburse us those costs. In addition, we've made contact with Richland Housing for a similar situation where we've, we're gonna go in there and take care of the streets that are in the city right away, and then any additional work outside of that scope, we're gonna coordinate with Richland Housing, so they could take care of their streets while they're in there, but then pay for anything that's, that's private property. So, with that, I'd like to recommend, we award the contract 1608 Residential Resurfacing Project to VSS International of West Sacramento, in the amount of their total bid, $1,339,120, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Comments? Okay, with that, I do have a speaker card. Gustavo Becerra.
Good evening, Mayor Cleveland, and members of the council. My name's Gus Becerra, Executive Director, Regional Housing Authority, 1455 Butte House Road. I just wanted to show my appreciation to Ben and city staff and the council. Ben approached us a few months ago if we were interested in piggybacking on this contract. As you all know, Richland is one of the properties that we own in the city of Yuba City, but Richland has a mix of both private and public streets. And, we actually bid this project for the private streets about five, six years ago. And our lowest bid came in roughly at about $100,000. The engineer's estimate from Mr. Moody for our portion reimbursed to the city was about $20,000. So, by piggybacking, we're gonna see an operational savings of roughly $80,000, maybe more, because we bid it out about five years ago, and obviously, labor and material has increased since then. So, I'm just up here to show my gratitude and appreciation for allowing us to piggyback on your, on your contract if the council approves it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus. And with that, I'll bring it back to the council, and looking for some action? Move staff's recommendation?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, unanimous vote. Thank you, Gus. That was great, because having served nine years on the housing authority, I know all about those roads and the difficulty of even identifying what was city and what was privately owned at one time. So, it's been great to see this. Okay, number six, ventilation, heating, air conditioning, preventative and maintenance, RFP.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The city contracts for routine preventative maintenance of all HVAC systems, including 16 facilities and 225 units, requiring service four times a year. And this consists of testing operations, replacing filters, checking for leaks, and checking electrical contacts to extend equipment life and ensure the comfort of the team members and the public, the customers. Staff developed specifications and scoring guidelines, advertised and sent a proposal per the municipal code to 29 HVAC vendors, 22 being local, and received seven responses, one being local. These responses were scored on cost, ability, experience, and references, with Mesa Energy Services being judged by staff as the top firm. Staff recommends that council award the contract for HVAC preventative maintenance to Mesa Energy Systems, Inc. of Sacramento, California, for the amount of $57,272, with the option of three one-year extensions, as approved by the city manager, finding that it is in the best interest of the city to do so. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the council forum? Seeing none, I'm looking for some action.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Staff's recommend, I put for staff's recommendations of A and B.
Got a second?
Second.
Got a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, unanimous vote. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to another item for you, Spencer, Mr. Morrison. Professional auditing services proposal, RFP 17-06.
Good evening, again. The city has had the same audit firm for nine years, Moss, Levy, and Hartzheim, and staff decided it was time to change firms, which is prudent fiscal practice.
And staff decided it was time to change firms, uh, which is prudent for fiscal practice. As in the past, the new firm will also audit the Flood Control Agency and SASSA, the Animal Control Services Authority. Staff developed specifications and scoring guidelines, advertised, and sent notification to 47 firms with seven responding, and none were local. Each proposal was scored on technical ability, audit approach, and price, with the top three vetted through a thorough reference check, which yielded Badawi and Associates, uh, as the winning proposer. Uh, staff recommends that council award the three-year contract for professional auditing services to Badawin Associates of Oakland, California, in the total amount of $227,760, broken into three fiscal year payments, ranging from $43,700 to $46,350, with the option of extending two additional years with the approval of the city manager, as it is in the best interest of the city to do so. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from council?
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Uh, Spencer, the nine-year period seems a little unusual that we ran nine years. Could, could you kind of lead us through why, uh, we went nine years?
Yes, sir. So, uh, as Councilman Buckland pointed out, uh, nine years, uh, being an odd number, uh, was the combination of one five-year contract and one four-year contract. So, we actually went to bed, went to bid in the middle of these, uh, these, these two contracts, and the same firm prevailed. Uh, it was determined by staff at that time that, uh, we were not, um, not, we were not out of compliance with a norm. But we, uh, given the options that we had at that time, uh, it was in the best interest of the city to do so. We did elect to, on the current contract, to extend one additional year after the three-year contract ended, but not a, not a fifth year.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may comment on top of, uh, Mr. Morrison's comments in that regard. Um, the city, the Government Accounting Standards Board comes out with pronouncements on a regular basis. GASB 34 did also come out during that middle period. And part of that determination of what Mr. Morrison mentioned was also coupled with the fact that it was in our best interest to stay with the same auditor, to change over our financial statements for consistency. Um, and it would have caused too much disruption to make that change mid, midterm. Uh, and so that coupled with what Mr. Morrison said just made the most sense to the city, so, uh, but a very good question. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, looking, go ahead.
Spencer, if you could clarify, how many applications were sent out for the bid?
So, we sent notifications to 47 firms.
Forty-seven, and?
Yes.
Seven replied?
Seven responded, correct.
Seven responded, and then, um, how many of the 47 were local?
Zero, sir.
Zero, okay.
Yes, sir.
And then the, um, I forgot my glasses. The 227, 760, um, does that, that amount, is it in, we do have the two one-year extensions? That includes the five?
No, no, sir. This, uh, that amount is for the first three years. Oh, take that back.
Yeah, I'm doing the math here.
You're right. No, you're right. I wrote, I wrote that incorrectly in my notes. That would be for the entire five years.
All right.
But we're only committing with this action to the first three.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good question. Um, with that, I'm looking for some action.
Move to approve. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, there is another unanimous vote. Thank you. Now, we're moving on to, uh, public communication. You are welcome to and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited and, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to represent the opinions of the group. Were there any written requests?
We received one, Mayor Cleveland. Um, from, uh, Mr. Garrison.
Mr.?
For item number 14.
Okay. So that's for item number 14. Okay, great. I'll take that then. Okay, um, we'll have, um, when we get to an item 14, he'll have five minutes to speak. Um, then I also had, uh, another person come up here, um, wanting to speak. Um, it says number nine, and so Curtis Vandermolen, is this, okay. And it's not an item on the agenda at all? Fantastic. You got it.
Excuse me. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Uh, I'm Curtis Vandermolen. I work as Deputy Director for the California Transportation Commission. And Emma, Dr. Emma Blackthorn is the Director of the North Central Adult Ed Consortium. Um, we're actually here today with a personal issue, a very serious issue that I'm sure you're all aware of. Uh, it concerns traffic speeds along the Live Oak Bor, Boulevard corridor. Their, traffic along there is out of control. The city's already installed one, uh, set of traffic calming measures, which is the, the drive feedback signs there. This was done approximately four years ago, and the effectiveness of them, while they're proven to be quite effective when they're first installed, it's fallen off, and the sign's largely ignored now. Our neighbor moved into their house about three years ago, and shortly after moving in, their dog was maimed by a speeding driver that came by. Uh, Emma and I purchased our home last November, and this last Saturday, uh, the pup that we rescued a couple of months ago was also slammed into by a speeding driver. Um, there was no attempt to slow. There was no screeching of tires. There were no skid marks. Driver had no time to react because of how fast they were going. Um, Monday morning, as I was leaving, I also found that one of our neighbor had cats had been struck and killed along Live Oak Boulevard. Um, we witnessed contests of speed along the, the street, general recklessness. Um, the street's signed at 35 miles an hour, even though it's a mixed residential and, and business street. Um, two weeks ago, while we were out for a walk in the evening, we saw a red Mustang leaving the stoplight at Queens headed south. It accelerated to about 90 miles an hour before it hit the, the street in front of our house. There are over a dozen school-aged children from our house and the neighbors' houses that live right along that stretch of Live Oak. What happened Saturday morning was I was out trimming our hedge, you know, trying to make the street in my house look better, um, getting things under control, and our daughters were helping picking up the trimmings around it. Um, and our dog, you know, being a herding dog, went out and checked with my little girl who'd gone on the other side of the hedge to help pick up, um, those branches. And that was when that dog was hit. Um, the most effective cough, traffic calming measure, which can be implemented on a rural street up to 35 miles an hour as a speed table. They're proven to be effective up to 200 yards away. They're highly effective at 15 feet before and 15 feet after. Uh, there are no sidewalks there for our children to walk on. We're afraid for our kids. Our animals have already been harmed. Uh, we respectfully request that you direct the city to install a speed table on Live Oak Boulevard at about 1185. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I guess the best I can say on that is we will speak, uh, with our staff involved and see what can be also done for patrolling in that area, increased. I know I have noticed the speed there is extreme. That's all I will say. Um, okay, moving on consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council staff or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. I have, let me see here, that's 14. Pat Miller would, uh, like number 12 to be removed for discussion. So do I, I'm going to remove that, so I have, uh, uh, action for, um, 10 and 11?
I'd move items 10 and 11 on the consent calendar.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous vote. Okay. Ms. Miller, uh, you may go to the podium.
Pat Miller, good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council folks. Um, I just have a question as to why the city is loaning money to this, um, group that was established to promote tourism when it was the, uh, Chamber of Commerce that was pushing this issue, and why aren't, why isn't the chamber fronting the money?
Yes, Ricky, you are the number one person that could answer that. Please go up and explain. And then our staff may have, uh, some comments regarding that also. That's up to them.
Good evening, Mayor Cleveland, council members, and want to thank, uh, Pat Miller for the question, and I'm happy to address that. I'm Ricky Schaefer, the CEO of the Yubuseter Chamber of Commerce. And, uh, this has been a, a long, ongoing, um, process to form what is becoming the Yubuseter Regional Tourism Improvement District. We know which had been a program that was supported, um, through efforts with the city of Yuba City for a number of years to get to the point where this could be a self-sustaining effort. Uh, the, the chamber is in a relationship with the, I should say, is it going to be in a contracted relationship with the Yubuseter Lodging Association to execute per their direction. They're contracting with us to perform services to execute their marketing plan, uh, for the tourism effort. This is not a, an effort that is owned by the, the Chamber of Commerce. We are executing a service. So there is the, the discussion with the loan is, although there is assessment fees that are beginning April 1, that the Lodging, uh, Association will begin collecting, the money for, for those efforts won't actually be realized or seen until August or September. There's current tourism efforts in progress and that have gained quite a bit momentum, which have a great, uh, public benefit to the economy of our, our community. So in the interest, the Lodging Association, it was in their interest to, to request a, uh, the loan amount to continue with efforts of, that are currently in progress until they start receiving the funds that will be reoccurring from the assessment. So, we're really having a gap of, of when the assessment begins to when fees will actually being able to be utilized to, to actually perform the TID. Um, and that will be a, so the contract itself goes from the city to this new nonprofit organization, which is made up of lodging owners and operators. And so this loan is to the Lodging Association. Um, those in turn will be a contract and also a very formalized process from that Lodging Association to the chamber to continue the services that are currently being performed. Does that, was that, can I answer questions? Is, was that enough detail? Steve?
Staff?
Anything from?
Please, Steve? Go ahead.
I was going to say, through the ma, um, since Pat asked the question, I'm not sure if her question was really answered.
Well, and I, I did, and Pat, as I'm thinking back to what you said, I believe that one of the questions at the end was, why was the chamber not, why was the chamber not funding it? The, the chamber is a, a nonprofit organization that receives its funding sources through member services and benefits. Programs such as tourism become as, uh, for, they receive outside funding for us to perform a service. So, um, the, this small, though it's, it, it may seem in the grand scheme of things, when you take it against a larger budget, that would actually represent probably close to, um, 10% of the chamber's operating budget. We're not in a position to fund from a nonprofit standpoint, that particular effort, we execute. So we, we will receive direction from the association, how to perform that service, and are just not able to absorb through our own, um, through our own budget to, to be able to make this loan to the association, to continue that service. Did that closer answer the question?
If you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. I think Ricky summed it up fairly well. The city has, uh, invested over $300,000 in tourism. I know some people may not want to hear that, uh, but that is, that's since 2013. And why is that? Because this is part of our local economy. We want it to be a larger part of our local economy. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce isn't designed to be a tourism entity. Uh, they've led the charge. Uh, they've, they've served as that vehicle. And now this Yubuseter Lodging Association is going to be distinct and separate from the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, the chamber may have a relationship with that Yubuseter Lodging Association where they continue to provide services. But ultimately, that agent will be, uh, the hotels and motels. Um, whereas in the past, the city has invested those funds. This is a transition point where they need to become, uh, on their own. And in that interim period, they need a ca, a cash flow loan of $20,000 from the staff perspective. Um, it's not a problem. We collect the money. So when it comes to getting the money back, uh, frankly, uh, we will simply deduct it from the redemptions to the Lodging Association. So in terms of the security, we are in a very secure position. Um, and where interest rates are on our idle cash, um, it's not, uh, a concern. Um, our interest rate on our idle cash is about 1%. Uh, some people may say, why are you only getting 1%? Because in government, our primary concern is the safe, the safety of the public dollars. Uh, we're not shooting for high yield. Uh, that's where the risk is, and we don't want to lose any of the public funds. So that's my summary. If you have any additional questions, happy to answer them. Thank you.
Does that satisfy you? Thank you very much. But thank you for the question because, uh, you know, it is slightly unusual. With that, I'm looking for some action.
Move staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none? Unanimous vote. We will now move on to the general items, professional services agreement with West Yost Associates for the water system, master plan update, and distribution system, surge protection, facility design. Diana Langley, Public Works Director.
Good evening, Mayor and council. First of all, I would like to thank, uh, Mandy Chohin. He's in the audience tonight. He worked, um, in cooperation with our former utilities director, Bill Lewis, to prepare the request for proposals for the preparation of a water system master plan update and also the surge protection design. So they spent a lot of time assessing what we needed as part of the scope of work to then issue the RFP. So, why do we need an updated water master plan? The water master plan was completed in 2004 and updated in 2006. It was based upon development growth at the time of approximately 750 to 1,000 homes per year. And our current growth rate's approximately 50 homes per year, so significantly different than at the time that it was prepared. And since that time, we've had significant economic, environmental, regulatory, and legislative changes. So, what's driving the need for the master plan? As I mentioned, we've had a reduced growth rate. Um, instead of the 752,000 homes per year, at the 50 homes per year. The water conservation regulations, so not only the long-term, in terms of the governor's desire for conservation as a way of life, but also the short-term conservation regulations that we've experienced. In terms of long-term, we have the Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance that were, will forever change how we irrigate landscaping and will directly impact the amount of water consumption that we see for not only residential, but also, um, non-residential projects. Regulatory requirements, um, particularly related to like disinfection byproducts and, uh, water quality, economic changes, and then also legislative changes. And so the, the need for the master plan, um, the outcomes of this master plan are many. Number one, we'll be able to come up with a new per capita usage estimate. So why is this important? As we are evaluating our infrastructure, to size infrastructure, you base that upon a, not only fire flows required, but also per capita usage. And so with these long-term conservation regulations going to effect, it will reduce overall water consumption long-term, which could then mean that you can downsize the facilities that were originally included in the master plan. What that then equates to is the reevaluation of our water connection fees. And just to put it in perspective, if we can save one water tank from needing, needing to be constructed, that's about $8 million. So the potential costs... So the potential costs associated with this in terms of savings for not oversizing the infrastructure are significant. We'll also be able to calculate an updated water supply estimate to be able to provide water to build out of the community. As you know, our water supply, in terms of reliability, we have some very reliable products, very reliable contracts, and then we have some that are not as reliable. And so as we look forward into the future in terms of getting additional water supply, it's important that we have an accurate estimate for that. By updating the model, we'll be able to evaluate disinfection byproducts within the system, and we'll also be able to evaluate the time that the water is in the distribution system, so we can report the age. So it's kind of odd to think of water in terms of age, but you don't want water standing stagnant in your pipelines for a long period of time. I will be able to develop a comprehensive capital improvement program, and then also look at improvements for existing infrastructure. So a lot of factors feeding into the need for the update, with a lot of expectations coming out of that update. In addition to the water master plan update, over the last few months, we've run into a situation particularly related to power outages. What we've found through the Water Loss Control Program study that we've prepared is that when we have power outages at the water treatment plant, it creates a surge within the distribution system where you have an immediate pressure drop, and then it follows within milliseconds a pressure spike. And so within the distribution system, we will see pressure swings of about 60 PSI in a matter of just a second. And so what that does to your distribution system is it tears it apart. And so after we have these surges, we will actually see a direct link to leaks within the distribution system. So by being able to not only do the electrical and instrumentation evaluation where you're looking at condition assessment, and then also your power quality as it's coming into the water treatment plant, and on the downstream side, evaluating your surge protection system, we will be able to directly address those pressure fluctuations and then the negative impacts on the distribution system. So what does that mean to our customers? If we can reduce that water hammer and reduce the number of leaks within the system, we're reducing the cost to repair the system and the negative impacts on our distribution So with that, the total contract cost is $851,213 plus we're requesting $42,000 in contingency. It's broken down here in terms of the costs. For the funding sources and the capital improvement program, we have money programmed for the electrical and instrumentation control portion. We also, with this last year, because of the increased rain, we have some money in our water operations budget left over from our conservation account, so $195,000 that we're requesting to be transferred to this project account. We have $150,000 in the capital improvement program for a water model update. And so with that, we're requesting a transfer of unallocated water CIP reserve of $438,571, of which $147,000 will be reimbursable from new connection fees as it's a direct benefit to new development. So with that, the recommendation tonight is to award a professional services contract to West Yoast Associates of Davis. Authorize the finance director to make a budget transfer from the water operations account for water conservation to the water model update account, and then also authorize the finance director to make a budget transfer from an unallocated water CIP reserve. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council members? I'll just make one comment. I'm glad you finally said water hammer, because a lot of people don't realize what you're talking about until, if you've ever been in a house where you turn the water on and you hear a bang at the end of the pipes, that's called water hammer. That's where pressure, usually it's for them, it's water, I mean, air has gotten into the line and it's, you know, going to the end of a curve and it hits that. Now there's devices in homes that actually eliminate that. It's a little, usually a little tube thing about that tall that can take that pressure off. But no, that's very important because that does cause leaks in a system. It can blow the end off of a 90-degree if it hits hard enough. So that's important to be taken care of. With no other comments, looking for action?
I'll make a motion to go with staff's recommendation of A, B, and C.
I'll second.
A first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none? Unanimous? Thank you very much. Moving on to the brightest item of the night, well, maybe. Illegal fireworks, noise, and hazard issues presented by Fire Chief Pete Daley.
Good evening, Mayor Cleveland, members of the council. I'm not alone tonight. I have Chief Landon here with me, and I have Mr. Rodriguez as well, if they have code enforcement questions. But I got picked to come up and do the presentation. They wanted the most handsome guy up here, so I volunteered. So with that.
Keyword, fire. Yes, fire.
Thank you. So with that, that's okay. So I'm here to follow up on a meeting of January 17, 2017, where the council directed staff to provide a report on options to address illegal fireworks, noise, and hazard issues to present to council for discussion at future city council meetings. We're here tonight to discuss that and provide some options. Staff has identified several options for council to consider, ranging from least permissive, ban of all fireworks, both legal and illegal, within city limits to most permissive, keeping the status quo, and we'll talk about those. So with that, I'll just jump into the presentation. So the community is expressing concern, complaints as the use and frequency of illegal fireworks is expanding throughout all demographics and neighborhoods of the city. So we're bringing for you tonight for consideration and direction, least permissive to most Current practices, legal safe and sane fireworks can be sold from noon 28 to noon July 6, nine-day period currently. That's out of health and safety code. It's pretty straightforward. Permits are issued by the fire department to nonprofit organizations or cooperating, organized primarily for veteran, patriotic, welfare, civic betterment, or charitable purposes. So all of our fireworks stands are there for fundraising purposes. It's not for private profit, which we've had those a long time ago. Sale of fireworks is a major fundraiser for community organizations. As long as I can remember, we've never had any injuries or fires that I know that were caused by safe and sane fireworks unless they were altered, or most of them have occurred because of illegal fireworks. There's about 30 stands right now that we have, give or take a few, a year that we issue permits for. Our permits are like $105. It's not a moneymaker or revenue generator for us. It's just to cover our costs for the inspection and ensure that they're operating safely. So it's about $3,000 in revenue a year is what we generate from inspecting these facilities. Public safety officials have struggled to hold users accountable for possession of used or altered legal or dangerous illegal fireworks to staffing issues and other high-priority calls. So let's run through the options real quick that we came up with. What happens if we stay status quo? Well, if we stay status quo, on the pro side, fireworks booth can raise $10,000 to $12,000 for a community fundraiser on average. Currently, like I said, there's about 30 permits issued annually, and neighborhoods and home fireworks are very popular in our area. Some of the cons is that illegal fireworks are being discharged at all times and days throughout the community, and a very small number of violations were issued for use of illegal fireworks that were used in Yuba City in 2016. One of the options we can look at is enhanced enforcement. The pro of that is increased presence of public safety personnel during the first week in July should help discourage and discharge of illegal and dangerous fireworks. The con to that obviously is the cost associated with that. The estimated cost for four nights with additional staffing for police and fire, we're estimating about $12,500. Currently, officers need to witness the legal discharge in order to issue citation, and that's the challenge, some of the challenges we're running into. It seems like when we come around the corner, they're all staying in the street and no one knows what happens. Another option is public outreach campaign. Some of the examples of that could include a zero tolerance of illegal and dangerous fireworks. We could access our social media and Facebook and website. Direct mailing to Yuba City residents. Educational materials provided to schools. Radio and newspaper advertisements. A booth that our summer stroll, we can provide information on that during the week of June 17. The use of our Yuba City 311 app to report illegal fireworks. If we wanted to budget for a campaign, that could run us an additional $10,000 to $12,000 to push some of these items out, to get the word out to people. Some communities, I grew up in Southern California, and down there, all fireworks were legal. It was just a matter of practice, just because of the high fire danger down in Southern California. Different communities and different parts of California do it differently. As you move up more north, it seems to be a more accepted practice, and a lot of it, like I said, was driven because of community events or because of volunteer organizations wanting to raise money. And it was, and if you look at the history of fireworks, especially illegal fireworks, when we were growing up, you didn't have a lot of illegal fireworks. They weren't readily accessible. Now they're so readily accessible outside the state of California, and they're being trucked in quite a bit, that they're much more readily accessible to the common person, where in the past, usually most people didn't have access to those, so it was an issue. But that's definitely changing here in this generation. But some, like I said, here in the city of, in Southern California, down Riverside County, where basically they've banned, they have a zero tolerance for any fireworks. So that would be one extreme that we talked about today, and they have a fine of $1,000. I believe in the health and safety code, I think the maximum for fine is $1,000 under so many pounds. I want to say 25 pounds enters my mind. So that's why you see that number. You'll see that number pretty common. In most of the cities I looked at, when I reviewed the information, you saw fines, the low was usually 500 and the high was usually 1,000. Sometimes they were 350, but for the most part, it was 500 and 1,000. Ordinance amendments, another option we can look at. Possible additions to our fireworks ordinance could include the following. We could change the times and dates that we allow the discharge of fireworks in city limits. We could limit it to the Fourth of July and during certain times. Designation of a responsible party. This seems to be a trend coming along where the owner or occupant of real property, or the parent, or the legal guardian of person under the age of 18 who causes or maintains violation, so-called the social host. So if sometimes, I don't really have to understand this that well, I'll have to look into a little more, and maybe I can defer to Chief Landon, but my understanding basically is we may not have to, if we pass this ordinance, we could actually hold the property owner accountable if the fireworks were discharged on the property. Setting administrative citations of $1,000 for violators of the ordinance, which we currently don't have. I think in our current ordinance, I think it says we cannot exceed $100 without approval from the council, if I remember correctly. Designation of enforcement officers who may issue citations. Violators would pay any and all public safety emergency response costs for damages directly caused by illegal fireworks. We do that already through cost recovery, so that one we're kind of already doing. Anytime we come across something that's done illegally, we'll bill for that at least through the DA's office if we can, but that's usually when criminal charges are involved. The fireworks ban, which would be legal and illegal, the pros on that is a fireworks ban is easier to enforce and simplicity. If there's no fireworks allowed, it's easier for, I'm sure, I'll let Chief Landon speak to deal with, as well as on the fire side. Less chance of injury in fires related to dangerous fireworks. However, on the con side, the sale of fireworks is a major issue in our community, a major fundraiser for nonprofits, community organizations. One of the other cons is we don't have, as Chief, or excuse me, as Councilman Buckland has mentioned in the past, we don't have a lot of Fourth of July local events, and that's challenging for us because we don't have entertainment for people to go to. And so that can be challenging if you also ban fireworks. And then the question is, even if we do some of those things, will the discharge of illegal fireworks still occur? And so we'll achieve what we're looking at achieving. Some other options that have been mentioned in the past is phasing out of legal fireworks and community fireworks booth fundraisers over a period of time. And another option that's been listed is promoting a large Fourth of July community event, but obviously there's costs associated with that as well. So from least restrictive to most restrictive, I think I've covered those. Chief Landon, do you want to share anything?
No, but if you go back that first slide, maybe you can get an idea real quick of what the different proposals are.
You good? So at this time, we'll have to answer any questions.
I do want to address one thing real quick. When we're talking about enforcement, because we tried to do that last year, myself, a couple other officers in unmarked vehicles, and the fire chief and a couple of his people were out there, it's almost impossible to get to the scene of an illegal firework when you see it lit off and still have the people there present when you arrive. So that's why the administrative citation is preferred method on that, because then we can hold somebody accountable with just a preponderance of the evidence, and the social host one plays along with that, when you hold the particular address accountable for that. But when you have everybody out there lighting fireworks, and you see one go up in the air, and you start to drive around there, you have thousands of kids, you're trying to maneuver around in an unmarked vehicle, I think we came across maybe one or two people, and we probably saw several hundred illegal fireworks going off last year in a certain timeframe. You can get up on Peas Road, you can watch, but by the time you get there and the time you maneuver around the parties, it's way too late. And you could come up to the scene of evidence of a illegal firework just being discharged, where you still can't do anything without the administrative citation unless you actually see somebody. It's like a misdemeanor has to be committed in the presence of the officer. Absent that, you have to prove that that person, you could do the warrant, which is very, it comes with the same amount of evidence that has to be proven, that that particular person out of the 20 people surrounding him, and nobody's going to tell you who did it, is the person that lit that firework off. So we do face a lot of issues when we're trying to do the enforcement without some type of administration, administrative citation, or a social host. I talked to an officer today from Huntington Beach on the administrative citation. One of the things they do with that is they attach the fine to your water bill. So it makes it cost-effective for them to pay the fine, and if they don't, you turn off their water.
Very unique.
Now you give finance a problem.
So is there any questions, comments from the council at this time?
Yeah. Yes. Rob, can you go back or up, I think forward one slide? The status quo?
No.
Oops.
Did I go too far? Carol, you're much better. I could do the handgun.
I'm kind of questioning on the link between staying in status quo. Illegal fireworks are going to happen anyway.
Correct.
Right? So if we, if we keep the folks able to raise money, we keep the folks able to use fireworks, they're going to do it anyway. So what's the link between keeping them and preventing? If we, if we make the legal stuff illegal, it's not going to prevent the illegal stuff.
Correct.
Right. What we're saying is if everything stayed the same as it was right now, this is what it would look like. I'm not sure if I'm catching what you were saying.
Well, maybe I'm not communicating. I'm just trying to, if, I don't want to prevent families from having their fireworks legally.
Absolutely.
Nor do I want to prevent, take the rug out from under these folks trying to raise money for their, for their causes. I don't know exactly where we go from here as far as developing a plan, because I like several parts of every slide.
Absolutely.
And the social host, I think, is the only way to go. The administrative citation is the only way to go. I don't think $1,000 is enough. And I'd also like to, as we move forward with this, see if we can go about integrating or involving SASSA with this, because a lot of the gentleman that was here before brought up a very compelling point about how it terrified his animals. And he's not the only one, I'm sure. And so if we can do something, maybe brainstorm ideas to help mitigate that, I would think that would be a good idea, too.
I understand. What this is saying is least, this is nothing changes, then you have four other scenarios where you have a combination of one.
Talking big picture right now, not just now.
Right. And you could pick and choose the way you want, you want to direct us to go and what avenue.
All right. All right. But yeah, good, very good options.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
So I'm thinking with what we have to ensure that our families can still enjoy their neighborhood fireworks and have their get-toethers, also for the fundraising for the communities to be able to do that. Looking at the ordinances, can we move to that screen? I think that's probably where we, we will probably focus on is keep it the way it is, but make the ordinance, the amendments, a little bit stronger. And probably with the social host, just, you know, personal experience, it's like, you know, And probably with the social host, just, you know, personal experience, it's like fireworks are landing in your backyard. Neighbors, as well as our animals, are going crazy. Just if you have furniture in the backyard, you get fireworks that land on furniture that causes cushions to go on fire. So things like that, I think we have to make somebody responsible. And I think just having that responsible party under the social host ordinance and making that fine as high as possible. Because we're not going to be able to track, I mean, if a neighborhood is having three parties going on and they're all throwing them up in the air, we're not going to know where that firework is actually coming from that's landing in your personal property.
Very good points, Vice Mayor. And also in addition to this, I would just like to add that we'd like to do the public campaign, the advertising campaign, to let everybody know, this is coming. I don't want to surprise anybody on the 4th of July and hit them with the administrative citation or something like that. I want to prevent it by the advertisement and making sure that everybody's aware of it first and prior to that. That would be a good goal for us.
Through the mayor, totally agree. And probably the summer stroll would be a great place to go ahead and make those announcements with whatever we decide to move forward with, as well, in addition to getting it out to all of our residents through the mail.
Through the mayor.
Councilman Buckland. Sometimes I fear speaking for fear that words that I may use may confuse certain individuals in our community. But for Harold, keep your Webster's dictionary close by whenever you listen to my videos from a city council meeting. So there's a number of pieces to this that I like. There's some pieces to it that I don't like. If that seems confusing, it's because we're going to have to model a policy that works for Uba City in which the integration of illegal fireworks and legal fireworks have become the display of the day. And I would agree with the fire chief that the promotion of the illegal fireworks has occurred over a period of time, but it's also been promoted, I think, partially due to the absence of a community display, or a larger community display where individuals could go and watch the big show. The East Coast in the colonies, as I call them, that'd be, for those that want to know what the colony is, that's the 13 original states. They, every community puts on community displays. There are very few of those states that have, go out in the middle of your street and light it on fire or blow your neighbor's house up type activities. And it's done on 4th of July, which seems to be an oddity here, because apparently we're somewhat misled over time that maybe the 4th of July started somewhere about the 25th of June and ends somewhere right around the 10th of July, maybe even the 30th at midnight. When one of our neighbors remembers that he has a mortar tube sitting out in the garage that he needs to safely discharge into the air, so nobody will find it. And then all the ruckus breaks loose. But with all of that, and we're concerned about fundraising, you know, part of what can occur in a neighborhood is simply bringing individuals forward that are willing to participate in identifying where illegal fireworks are coming from. That in itself would be, I think, beneficial to a program. And I mean it from, you know, whether we put a bounty on individuals lighting off illegal fireworks, people taking pictures of somebody out in the middle of the road, I don't care. We need to attack this as a community and squash what's happening, because it is a hazard to our community. If we also look at dates and times, I'm all about celebrating on the 4th of July, because I believe it's one of the greatest times to bring family and community together in support of our founding fathers, the principles of this nation, and a celebration none like any other country. And it's still, I'm somewhat perplexed why England doesn't participate with us during the 4th of July, but they seem to be a little standoffish, and they do their fireworks at another time of year. But yet, I think that we can certainly bring a number of these components together to have a very successful fundraising opportunity for the nonprofits and all of those organizations, but yet to increase the safety for our families, the peace, the well-being of our families, and certainly, none to the least, the animals that are impacted by the fireworks. Again, I've been in, the state of Tennessee allows fireworks 365 days out of the year. They have certain days that they celebrate. Tuesday seems to be one of the big ones. But you can go to a supermarket and buy what we would call illegal fireworks. Those are just Tennessee, blow them up in the air and wreak havoc in your neighborhood type fireworks. And again, they can light them off in some counties 365 days out of the year. That's what they do. That's not how we're set up here in California, and certainly with more dense populations, it has a greater effect on our community. So I think as we look forward or look into this, and certainly hear from the public, we have to reach out and be creative in looking at all of the different options that are out there and certainly trying to minimize, I think, the timeframe in which people can wreak havoc on our neighborhoods. I hope that was clear enough for Harold.
Quite wordy. He might get lost. Okay, I do, okay, go ahead.
Chief Landon, you know, you're talking about the cost of officers and so on and so forth. Have we thought, since it's the future, have we thought maybe using drones? Because I see a lot on TV and stuff where they do a lot, they cover a lot of area, less manpower. You could use two men to cover quite a bit of the community. And with state-of-the-art cameras and stuff on it, we could actually catch them and see them in their homes. Have we ever thought maybe just something, I'm going kind of like out of the box.
I think there's a lot of constitutional issues that arise when you start flying over private properties and stuff like that, and the issues of liability when you're trying to fly the drones. We certainly want to continue to look technologically in the future and use all our resources. So it's something that we would like to, you know, continue to explore. But there are a lot of issues that arise when you start using.
There's even more laws to do that than illegally shooting fireworks off. Okay, thank you. I was just kind of thinking out of the box. Make it easier for you, make it easier for you. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a speaker card, and I would like Mr. Richard Garrison to go to the podium. And he does have five minutes if he so wishes to utilize all five minutes.
I go by my middle name, which is Dale, but it's official name is Richard. Can you hear me all right?
Absolutely.
I couldn't hear you guys too well, but I have a hearing problem. I had kind of a speech prepared, I wasn't going to read it, it was just going to be offhand, about the evils of the illegal fireworks and the kind of catch-22 that we have with the legal fireworks, which is for a good cause, and the illegal fireworks, which I think are atrocious. These are a lot of suggestions, and so my speech was kind of stolen, because I think some of these suggestions are good. But I think you have to have some sort of a subcommittee or a team of people to start working on it and come back with some solid recommendations and say, we recommend this. One that I would recommend first is the one for the property owner to be responsible in some way. That won't always be possible if it's out in the street, but when it's in the backyard, it's sure possible. This was taken out of my neighbor's backyard, and this came from the neighboring house behind him. We know where it came from. So we have witnesses to where it came from, but we do not have a witness of anybody firing the illegal fireworks. So I asked the fire chief on the phone, and he said that you have to see the person actually ignite that. That was hard for me to accept. I believed him, but I checked it out. I went to the assistant DA. Assistant DA told me the same thing. Two weeks ago, a policeman told me the same thing. You have to see the person that's doing it. But if you change that one ordinance for the property owner, or if it's in front of, in the street, in front of the property owner, then hold that person responsible. Other words, how in the world are you ever going to hold them responsible if you can't see them do it? Because they move out and so forth. I think we should also look at the type of persons that are doing the illegal fireworks. They don't give one hoot about their neighbors at all. The main part of my speech here tonight was to say how bad these fireworks are for certain groups of people. I'll start with the elderly. Our nervous systems are more shot, and we can't stand the noise. The noise is atrocious. The councilwoman talked about it, pets or animals. My dog's heartbeat, just, I think he could have a heart attack at any time. We have to have the dog on tranquilizers from the vet, and it's still a problem. We wanted to leave town, but my wife was too ill to do that. We were looking for a place that we could go, and people are doing that. They're leaving towns on the 4th. You can't say, I don't see a point in changing the hours, because they started it two weeks ago on a Saturday night, maybe some of you heard it. There were three loud booms, so they do it whenever they can. I'm glad to see that the council is working on this at this time, because, is that five minutes already?
Nope, I have one more.
I have one more minute. Where was I? The time thing just won't work. They do it any time of the year they want. Now, the reason I'm glad to see the council working on this is if you adopt some of these, and let's say that you go for the one that I'm for, is for banning all fireworks, then you have no trouble finding somebody. If you see somebody out there in the street, whether they're setting it off or not, you can cite them. So what it boils down to, when you think of all the harm that it does, the noise, and I really think about the veterans that are shell-shocked. I think about children that are autistic, they don't understand that type of noise. And I've seen an effect upon them. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for expressing your concerns and your opinions, is very much appreciated.
Okay.
I'd be glad to volunteer in this public thing. I think the public has to get involved, and this is really do. And if you advertise, you should think about East Indian radio. You should talk to the leadership of the East Indians, because they celebrate in India in a big way fireworks.
Okay.
And any kind of thing should be put in Punjabi and Spanish. And if you'd like to hear more from me sometime, call me up.
You will be contacted as part of the discussion that we will be doing, because this is, we still have more to do. I do have one more card here from Dennis Ravel.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Dennis Ravel, President of Ravel Communications, appearing on behalf of our client TNT Fireworks. TNT Fireworks is the wholesale distributor for about 2,600 out of the 3,000-plus nonprofits in California who sell state-approved fireworks every 4th of July as their primary fundraiser. We serve as the wholesale distributor for about 20 to 22 of the nonprofits here in Uba City every year. I've sent the council and city staff a fairly extensive letter on this, and I'll just briefly touch on the points and be happy to respond to any questions about them. This is a unique opportunity in the 296 cities that our client does business. I'm pleased to be here this evening, because my fiancee was born and raised here in Uba City, and her father still resides here. With respect to the options that the council has been presented, clearly administrative citations, social host ordinance, enhanced enforcement, and public education are all key components of what I believe the city should do. In terms of the administrative citations, because you are a general law city, you are limited to a maximum fine of $1,000 for the first occurrence, $2,000, second, $3,000, third. If you were a charter city, you would have no limit. The city of Stockton is a charter city. They are currently going to amend their ordinance to provide for social host as well as increased fine, and they are looking at as much as $5,000 for the first violation. The significance in the letter that I sent you, I presented a series of PowerPoint slides. I wish I could take credit for those, but those were actually produced by the city attorney for the city of Bakersfield, as it went through the same process about a year ago and moved to administrative fines. And the city attorney did that presentation for the benefit of the council, so they could see the difference between the citations and enforcement under the Health and Safety Code. On the social host ordinance, it is critical. I'd be happy to provide the city attorney additional copies of the other dozen and a half jurisdictions in addition to the ones I've already done. And the cost recovery is critical. Right now, the state has no money in its fireworks disposal fund, so those fireworks, illegal fireworks that are seized by either Uba City Police or Fire, while it is the statutory mandatory responsibility of the state to come pick them up, they probably won't, as they hadn't for quite some time, because they have gone through their entire reserve of money and as of yet, this administration has not appropriated any new money in the budget for that. Last, in terms of the enhanced enforcement. I presented to you information on the NALAM app. It was developed by us a year ago. We went through a beta testing. And the unique opportunity that it provides a jurisdiction is the ability to put enforcement in the hands of your residents, as well as your police officers. The city of Manteca had 154 reports on the NALAM smartphone app last year, of which 34 of them, they actually issued $1,000 citations, of which they have collected all but three out of those 34. And a significant chunk of those were issued by police officers who came upon a scene, which as a sole officer, they did not want to go into a drunken environment that potentially was very dangerous and which they had no backup. So they used the app to record the incidents, geocode the pictures, and file the reports. And then citations were issued on those reports based upon the NALAM app report filed by the police officer. The nice thing about the NALAM app, besides providing your residents an opportunity, like Dale spoke of, to actually participate in the enforcement process, is that it gives you a database of violators. That backend database is available in perpetuity for the city to always have access to it to know who in their jurisdiction is violating, so that you can target those neighborhoods with more public education. with more public education and enforcement activities in each subsequent year. Thank you.
To the mayor.
Mr. Buckland.
Sir, you know, you're with, or you have a public relations firm, and you represent TNT. And so the two are TNT and Phantom, am I correct?
Correct.
So I don't need you to speak to Phantom, but here's one of the things that I see, and maybe you can address this. There's certainly a price point between legal fireworks and illegal fireworks. The price point being that legal fireworks in the state of California have an exorbitant cost over illegal fireworks that can be trucked in from one state away, two states away. If you want to go to Tennessee and pick up a pickup truckload and risk yourself across the states, getting back to California, you can pick up an entire pickup truckload for $222. I would only know that because I have prior knowledge possibly of that. No, I have a friend that lives in Tennessee, and we've celebrated the Fourth of July there. But certainly, there is a factor that plays into that where individuals are bringing in illegal fireworks because they're cheaper. Maybe you could address that issue for us.
Well, it's both a cost issue of the product as well as a lack of enforcement at the state level. The state of California has the primary responsibility for preventing illegal fireworks from coming into California. Statutorily, unfortunately, over the years, for budgetary as well as other reasons, that responsibility has not been properly served at the state level, and consequently, local jurisdictions are in the unfortunate. And ridiculous position in not only being the first line of defense, they're the only line of defense. There are both organized, large-scale operations importing this into California. There's one operation out of Perrump, Nevada, that boasts that they have brought in as much as $5 million worth of illegal fireworks into Southern California alone. In various farming communities throughout the state, we have situations where produce trucks that are taking product out of the valley, out of the Central Valley into neighboring states are coming back with illegal fireworks. And because of the timing of the inspection stations, the inspection stations and truck scales, and not being open 24 hours, they time it right and can bring the product back in and are never caught. So it is both a, and from our standpoint, the state-approved fireworks industry is probably, I would say, one of the top three most heavily regulated, not only nationally but in the state. And the cost of, basically, I can't think of any other business that can only do business in the state of California seven days out of the year max, but has the overhead and expenses that we do that are imposed on us from every level, from the federal government on down.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments still? I, having been, as you have in the past, and probably all of us, a little bit in something to do with fireworks over the years since our volunteerism with youth groups of some kind or sports. You know, if everyone had their own storage, and they could buy it, and they sold everything, and then had their own little building that they would set up every year, I know that would be a significant reduction in the cost, which, you know, has to do with just the way California does it. And when you buy them illegally, they're shooting them all off, so they're not gonna, most of them don't store it. That's the best I, you know, I can come up with, you know, the unfortunate cost of doing business in that way. This is basically a presentation.
Mr. Mayor, if there's any general idea among your council, I think you've all offered a number of ideas. If there's, it doesn't necessarily need to be consensus because this will be brought back for you for separate consideration. But whatever you-
Two or three more times.
Or put us on the spot and ask the chiefs what they think they'd, you know, what they'd want to do, whatever your preference is.
Well, I know the social host is very effective. I've been in social host discussions and did that with teenage drinking and partying and stuff. Been involved in that over the years, and finally got something here passed regarding that. And it has been, I think, very effective. Shortening the days, I don't know about that. Maybe we can stay just over a few years on changing the dates and stuff or the length of time to be done. But I know social hosts, making the fines as strong as we can legally, making, in the program of making the app available for citizens to do this, I am definitely in favor of those being seriously considered. There are other components and aspect. The outreach definitely must be a very strong outreach as soon as we can. Right, administrative citation for sure, responsible party for sure. And then also designation of enforcement officers and others that have that app and stuff to be able to bring them forward. And those are the main ones that I have, and then the outreach. Where's your outreach? I think it was the next one after.
So Mayor Cleveland, what I've written down so far for you is, if this works for you, we can, I can get with Chief Landon, and we can get with the city attorney and take a look at these five core issues: administration citation, public education, social host, responsible party, maybe take a look at the dates and times and look at the app, and then bring that back as a package. Would that be of interest?
Yes, it would be, but, you know, your public outreach, you know, it is going to be costly. We don't have to do each and every one of those the first year because of the short timing we have, but definitely social media is quite easy to do. That gets passed around anywhere and everywhere once it gets to rolling, and that could possibly have encouraged people to get that out there. I don't know about the educational materials for schools, that kind of short period of time. If it's available, we can get some of that out. A radio newspaper, that's relatively, PSA isn't able to do that. Summer stroll, the booth. I'm not sure how effective use of YC311 would be because that night it would be pretty much overwhelmed. But that might have to be done the first year, and then an app put in there for later. Those are just my thoughts. Those are my general thoughts.
To the mayor.
The mayor?
Yes.
Going back on the materials, Rob, just some thoughts on that only because we do some of this to do the outreach with the community forums and the Summer at City Hall. With the social media, that's pretty easy and doesn't cost a lot. With the direct mailing, our Yuba City residents do get their water bill. So making a flyer, probably a bright color, something like that, that could be an insert with the water bill, just an idea, a thought there. With the educational materials through the schools, we can use the school systems as far as the voice messages and emails that we send out students and parents, information regarding events that are going on as we do for our Summer at City Hall as well as the community forums. Just another option there, just partner up with our school districts. Just some thoughts there. That might be a quick way if we want to move forward and get a package ready with possibly some of the amendments to start making some efforts this coming year. Doesn't have to be the full package, but at least start doing it in phases. So just my thoughts on that.
Thank you.
To the mayor.
Mr. Buckland.
It would be my recommendation to open up the purse strings. If we're going to go with a social host ordinance, and there are going to be fines up to $1,000, I could almost guarantee you with a little bit of active enforcement, we could pay the bill for any and all of our education that we do. That's first and foremost. Second to this is we don't have a lot of time to waste in our effort to start getting the word out now as people prepare to plan their exoduses from the state of California to bring back items for display. Now would be the time before they make that investment in time and money for those products. I do agree that a large amount of it is being trucked in from or by some of our commercial trucking in the area. And certainly, I would ask our friends with the California Highway Patrol to make some effort, or efforts, to look at some of those transport issues with the trucking companies, even through notification to some of our larger trucking firms that are engaged as solo drivers are engaged in that activity as they cross multiple states. But that is a large source that's coming back into our area. So I agree with the rest of the council on some of the areas that we should be engaged in, but again, I would preface that, that we need to move very quickly. We need to use our exercise in lack of communication during the evacuation phase and utilize some of our new skill sets that we're learning to build, to help promote a safer community during the Fourth of July.
And actually, I'm glad to hear that because my preference is to move quickly also, but I did not want to speak for the rest of the council. And you confirmed what I thought I had been hearing. And if that's the case, then we would, I would recommend personally that we have this all put into place and actually acting out by the end of April. We have a decision made as soon as we can, even if it's an addendum to having a special meeting attached to another meeting. We're planning during the, during April, we have several that are being considered, and that we would actually schedule a special meeting also adjacent to it before or after to make sure that we get some of the time-sensitive issues that are coming before us in this month of April. Because this is time-sensitive if we're going to do it this year. And it sounds like there is a strong desire to get this moving forward. Is that a good assumption through this? Thank you.
Yeah, from the staff level, we will focus our efforts on this and do whatever we can do within the time provided.
I would like to add that the, when you talk about timeliness and actions, if you're wanting amendments to the ordinances, it's going to have to happen really quickly because that is a public hearing, and it's going to be a long review by the city attorney also.
They'll get it to us as soon as they can, and it'll be a priority.
May I press that?
Yes.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for the information here. You got a lot of good points, but, not but, but just want to reiterate kind of where I was going from. It's going to be some of the same stuff is involving SASSA. Do you have a community outreach? I think the NALAM app might be really well. It sounds like it's purpose-built for that in addition to 311. So we can talk about the social host ordinance, admin citation procedures, basically develop an ops plan for enforcement whenever we can, whatever people you need. If you don't, I don't know if you have enough people listed in the, like, four or five officers, I think. I don't remember.
To the mayor?
We can, you can address that, you know, because like Councilman Buckland said, I think with these fines that we're probably going to get if we're successful, it's going to cover a lot of that. Even, we talked, you know, under the table here a little bit about implementing a reward system to encourage people to report folks if we get an arrest and then, or a citation. And of course, I wrote down, I'll get ahold of C, Commercial Vehicle Section for the California Highway Patrol and see if we can get some information of possible indicators of folks bringing that stuff into our state and get them that way too before they even land. And if it's appropriate, if you need any help or input, I'd be happy to volunteer to meet with you folks and put together a plan when we come forward. All right?
Are we going to also put, like, just fireworks are only allowed for six days? You know, from the time you can sell till the July 6th, are we also going to have them do that while they're doing this for preparation? Counsel, what do you? They sell for six days? Do they sell for five? Yeah, they sell for six days, so they're just allowed to light-
I think that could be part of the overall-
Chiefs, what do you think about that?
Sells for nine days.
Just that, they can only light fireworks off just for the six days?
That's going to be another ordinance amendment, so whatever your-
Another challenge, huh?
It's nine days, so I want to make sure.
Nine days?
Well, actually, it's for sale.
Okay.
Nine days.
I would like to say this, though, having been part of the selling them for fundraiser for a long period of time, and that is one of the big fundraisers for Little Leagues, different athletic organizations and stuff. If you do that too soon, you're not going to allow them to prepare because they're expecting to sell them for nine days.
No, I'm sorry. I meant just lighting them off. I'm sorry. So it is nine. I thought it was, so it's nine days. Okay, nine days then. Okay. I just meant the lighting of them, the letting them go. Because fireworks are sold, I was, I thought it was six, but it is nine. I'm sorry. We only sell them for six, but, the group I'm with, so I was, that's why I said six. But, okay, nine days. Do you want to throw that in there, or what do you, what do you two fellows think?
So I'm going off the top of my head here, but on the code, I believe the code says you can only sell them for nine days. I don't think there's any restriction on when you can light them off at all.
Okay.
So you can light them off, you could save them for-
If they're legal, they're legal.
They're legal, they're legal, and you can sell them off, you can light them off in October if you want. So if you want to restrict that as far as those 365 days, we'll need some direction on that.
Okay.
The other thing I want to mention real quick, and I'll be real brief, is we kind of have some tools in our toolbox already that, and one popped in my mind when one of the councilmembers mentioned evacuation, and that is we have a rapid notify system. So one of the things we'll be able to do is, over a period of time, we'll be able to contact everybody in the community and let them know what our standard is now and what our expectations are as we move forward. So I think we'll be able to reach out to a lot of people this year in a quick fashion.
I'm not willing to go with the reducing of the days yet for setting them off, but it's definitely, if this does not put a significant dent into the overall thing, council can always add that within the next couple of years if people don't get the message. My opinion, that's all. I knew it. See, I set them off.
No, and I agree with you. The adverse actions, if we can't get a handle on it now, the policy direction that I would push for would be the eventual-
Banning.
Banning of fireworks within the city. That would be a travesty to our community, certainly to the celebration, and I don't want to see it go that way. But people need to take some responsibility and act appropriately during this time of celebration.
Their own rights don't supersede the neighbors' rights, so they need to have that respect. And that's what we're trying to gently navigate also. Okay. I think there's some good direction there. And I think as fast as we can get it done, it would be very much appreciated so we can get the outreach going as fast as possible and as broad. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Okay, moving on to item number 15, presented by our city manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Good evening.
Once again. Your council met in January for an annual goal and priority setting session. You revisited your priority- You revisited your priorities, your longstanding priorities. I just, before I get into a brief overview, as noted in your agenda packet, there were certain objectives of your workshop, being reviewing the decisions of the previous year, revisiting the vision of the city, articulating the core values and relating them to the city's vision and goals, and finally giving guidance on budget priorities. This is what we do every year. Your council gets together, you tell us as staff what your priorities and goals are, and we go back and formulate a budget document that will ultimately be presented to you in late May for your consideration in June for implementation in July. These are your longstanding goals. I had the pleasure of speaking to the Chamber of Commerce on Friday on behalf of the mayor in his absence as he was in policy meetings in Los Angeles. We had several council people at different policy meetings and were unable to make it, but thank you to those who were able to attend. You know, touched upon these six areas and came to one of the obvious conclusions that your city staff is designed around these areas. Your first goal always, you know, one of our primary interests will always be public safety. You have the fire chief and police chief who address that. You have a person who focuses on the economic growth of our community. You have a public works director who is always determining how best to maintain and improve our infrastructure. You've had items on your agenda this evening in that regard. An HR director focused on developing our people and within our organization, a development services director, Arnaldo, determining how best that we prepare for our growth. And, you know, really, all of our roles is to enhance our image and reputation as a community. We all see a primary role in that. So public safety, including, of course, our levees wrapping that in as well, very important to us. A majority of our city funds go to public safety, right and appropriate. This is no different than any other community in California. Our monies go to police and fire and, of course, public works. Now, this is a bit distorted because these are operations, and so a large portion of your public works component comes in your capital improvement budget. So there are millions of dollars in that piece as well that's important to our community as we seek to grow and maintain our infrastructure. Looking at developing our economy, we do, you know, this is a nice shot of the Feather River Mill site, and your council in the coming months will be considering a development plan for that. And I'll say that publicly so that you can hold me to it. What's going on in Yuba City? A neat graphic, you can see all the new businesses that are coming to Yuba City. Really exciting time. I need, I was asked to point out specifically the one on the bottom, that being Ulta Beauty, not somewhere where I will frequent, but I understand a lot of people are excited to have that coming to Yuba City in the old Office Depot building in the Home Depot and Walmart area. So infrastructure investment key. You see the Fifth Street Bridge. You tonight approved a water, a master plan update. You see the sewer facility there as well. And the photo on the far right you saw in today's newspaper, which was really exciting to see and compliments to our city staff for representing the city so well. Of course, the Fifth Street Bridge, still a completion deadline of December 2019, and our city public work stack, staff works daily on this. Bridge Street, another component of our infrastructure, the Calusa Highway Corridor as well. And then moving on to preparing for growth, we are 15 square miles of our 25 square mile sphere of influence, our growth boundary. That's our destiny as a community. And at least a few of the council members were on the planning commission. They know this land use map well and all of the colors. Here are some of the plans. Later this month, your council will be discussing the El Margarita Master Plan, which is a major residential growth area for the city. You have the South Yuba City Annexation that is currently underway and the Bokstert Master Plan that will be taking place over these next two years. Enhancing our image, a couple of pieces to that, you see the YC 311 all wrapped into our website, some of the pieces of our website. And moving on to what you discussed earlier this evening, the Yuba Center Tourism Improvement District. This is really in terms of enhancing our image and where we put our funding. This is the Lodging Association being able to take control of their destiny, found their own funding scheme and a way that they can raise money and control the use of those funds to enhance tourism in our area. Somehow that got out of place, this, or I misspoke. This is the YC 311 that I spoke of earlier that you saw in today's paper. We are very proud as a community to have this. It gets a high level of usage. I was actually surprised because of the level of usage that we get, that it's represented, staff represented to me that we have almost only 1,200 people signed up for the app or they have the app downloaded. So this is my request to public, whoever's watching this, to download the YC 311 app and start using it because it's the most efficient way that we can provide services to the community. The visioning process that was part of your exercise at the meeting in January is something that we will be carrying forward in terms of doing a public visioning process, ultimately bringing that back before your council with recommendations. That's something that we're building into the 2017, 18 budget, and we'll be looking at that as we proceed. That's it in a nutshell. I gave you more than you may have wanted this evening after that robust conversation about fireworks. Hopefully you enjoyed it. Any questions for me? All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you for that reminder and presentation. With that, I will be going to business from the council, Councilmember Buckland.
This last week, and I was absent from, as well as the mayor, absent from the State of the City address presented by our city manager. Wish I could have been there, but found myself in the doldrums of Monterey attending a SECOG as a SECOG representative, the CALCOG meeting at that location. Actually got in late Wednesday night and represented SECOG in the city of Yuba City at the annual conference. And just a number of things to kind of bring forward. SB 1 was one of the items that we talked about in depth, and that is the new taxes on your vehicles, operation of your vehicles to raise money for infrastructure repair in the state of California. I can't say that there was 100% agreement with SB 1 because there's a number of pieces to it that are a little hard to swallow. But as we worked through it, we got a little bit better understanding of what that bill would look like because it was just coming to light during that actual meeting itself. Once I returned back to Yuba City on Friday afternoon, I was contacted by SECOG and asked to sit as the representative for CALCOG in the future. So I find that to be an honor to be selected of one of the one out of 31 other directors to build a represent the city at all of the CALCOG conferences and any type of educational events. And then this last, just yesterday, I think, had an opportunity to sit down with the general manager of the Yuba City Bears and discuss whether the season is going. The season kicks off on June the 2nd. This is a, really, an opportunity for our community. Steep in history, back into the teens and twenties and into the thirties where baseball was played right here in Yuba City and Marysville professionally. And the current league, though it be college kids primarily that are, they're playing, those that are, that are out of college for the summer. Four members of the, of the Gold Sox are, they started on opening day in the professional realm of baseball. So they've all been picked up and they were on opening day rosters, four individuals, one of those being Mr. Brock Stassi, who we're all familiar with, who's been in front of this council in the, in the past. But I think that that's a great testament to what this organization can do, what it will do for our community, the opportunity for our citizens to get together. Certainly, there will be a number of events on June the 2nd. There will be a fireworks display at the, at that opening date. And then also in July, they'll also have some fireworks over there as the Gold Sox will have their, their, one of their games that weekend as a home game. So it's a great opportunity. I encourage the community to get behind the Yuba City Bears and certainly the Gold Sox. This will be something that, that we can all be proud of. And again, the history of baseball in our area is pretty cool. And if citizens didn't know this, the very first professional team to ever travel by air went from Marysville, California to Woodland by airplane. So that was the very first one. I can't tell you the exact date, but that's some pretty cool stuff. So again, a lot of people will be looking forward to this season coming up. So that's all I have.
Moving on to Councilmember Cardoza.
All righty. Well, the last couple of weeks, I mean, lucky enough, I didn't have any commission meetings, but I had some goodies I've done. I attended the AB 1825 training here at City Hall. I attended the planning commission meeting concerning the El Margarita Master Plan, getting a little educated on that, getting ready for when it comes down to us here in the future. Sean and I went on a tour of our Yuba City Water Treatment Plant Facility. I'll let Sean talk a little bit more about that. I helped out this weekend with the police department for the child seat prevention program. Had quite a few people, started off slow, and when you get ready to close at noon, you got 20 cars that come in. We teaching how to install proper child seats in the car and how to make sure the children are safely hooked up. And for those folks that need it in the community, if their seats aren't any good, we replace them with a brand new seat. This morning, I attended the Sutter County Victims Services Third Annual Courage Awards at our Sutter County Museum. There were four folks that received the award. It's very nice to see people step up and get, go out of their box and like this courage awards is, you know, you have to go up and beyond, and a lot of people are scared to step forward, and these four individuals stepped forward and they received the award. Now, for chamber events, I attended Fiesta Fast Pitch Friday, which business owners learn how to pitch their business. That's the old elevator, five minutes in elevator, this is why I'm good, and that was real fun. The Business Breakfast Connection, which Steve just said earlier, he gave a wonderful presentation, which we just saw, to the folks there. Ribbon Cutting, we had the Grange last week, brand new store that was in our OSH facility. They've had a very good first month, and they're continuing on doing great things. Before I came to the meeting here earlier, I attended Ribbon Cutting for the Theater Gallery on Pluma Street. They're celebrating their permanent location at 756 Pluma Street. So that's where they're going to be, plan on staying. They've, they've been bounced around on Pluma Street, but this is where they're going to be for the rest of their prolonged future. And theater's still on schedule. She's got her goal for here in a few months, so hopefully we'll have some activities in our Sutter Theater here in the near future. So anyway, that's about it for me. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, I too didn't have any commission meetings the last two weeks. I did also took a few days off to spend family down south, but I managed to get to the Grange Co-op Grand Opening to, earlier. And I tell you, it was very impressive to go through there and see some of the things that they have for sale. It's going to be very good to see them hopefully flourish. They were very encouraged by their opening numbers so far, so good for them. Went to the State of the City breakfast and got to hear the State of the City talk by our city manager. Did a great job, great presentation. Everything was very professional, all those posters and whatnot that we have set up, really getting some mileage out of those. It looks really sharp. Also was impressed to hear the Vice Mayor of Live Look, Alex Tikas, I believe. He did a great job. He represented their city, 23 years old, got up there, and of course, he was nervous and whatnot, but he did a really good job for them and it was good to hear that. So always happy to be, to attend those types of things. I did a tour of the water treatment plant, which was night and day from the wastewater treatment plant experience. Could sell tickets to that one, but it was, it was nevertheless interesting. And again, same with the wastewater treatment plant, I would encourage anybody who has an hour free to go and take the opportunity to go through that. It's right there under our nose, and they're, they're doing a lot of good stuff for us. And, you know, I think everybody, most people would agree that we have really good drinking water here in Yuba City, and there's a reason for that. These people work really hard and there's a lot that goes into it, not as much as the other end, but it nevertheless was interesting. So I thank you for that opportunity, Manny. Also, the luncheon, it was today, seems like a long time ago, for the victims, put on by the DA and other folks. It was heartbreaking to hear their stories, but it's also important to have the conversation, and hopefully we can have an opportunity to dampen some of the occurrences of this domestic violence and abuse that happens. People victimizing other people, and it's, and it's, it doesn't have to happen, and it's really sad that we even have to go there, but it's a reality. And it was nice to come together as a community and a unified front in honoring those folks who were singled out for their accomplishments. So that's it.
Vice Mayor Diboll.
As far as commission meetings, board meetings, again, very slow week, slow last couple of weeks, no meetings on that end. In general, it's just been busy, but not really any solid meetings. Several events, community events, aside from some of the ones that have already been mentioned, we had our community come together for two beautiful events for fundraising for two individual families who have gone through some challenges. One individual, very, very young, suffering from cancer. The entire community came together to help in that fundraiser. And then turn around the following weekend, had a fundraiser for our athletic director at River Valley High School. And just to see our community come together and show so much love and support to families, whether you know them or you don't, but just everyone just coming together in both situations, one at Franklin School and the other one at River Valley, to see so many people come together. It was, this is why we call Yuba City home, and this is why we will continue to call Yuba City home, because when there's need, we come together and we do the right thing. And that's, that's why. It's my safe haven, it's my home and always will be. So with that, there was an event on Friday with the Punjabi American Heritage Society. They hold this dinner on an annual basis. Stan couldn't be there, but we were there to represent the city, to show that we are a part of that culture and wanted to continue that heritage going on along with them and support them. Aside from that, I think the rest was a pretty slow week on meeting sides. Otherwise, it was crazy busy.
Yeah, there was a lot of cancellations, actually, this last month, at the end of the month and a couple at the beginning from some of these committees saying, we're pretty much up to speed on what we need right now. We need a little time to get more done to present. Yes, you know, the mayor, as our previous past mayor, just closest one realizes and knows that when you're mayor, you get a lot of invites, you, six a night sometimes, and you have to pick and choose. And then for me, I have a volunteer position as.
and you have to pick and choose, and then for me, I have a volunteer position as a member of the Environmental Quality Policy Committee for the League of California Cities, and that was the weekend, or the Thursday and Friday, that we go to Southern California, and then they come back up here twice, so, we travel once there, they travel twice up here, and so that's where I was, I, I go for both days, I'm on one committee, sometimes it's Thursday, sometimes Friday, but I wanna know what's going on behind the scenes and the plans, and how, I'm gonna use the terminology, spin is put on things that from the day before, so that I know when it comes to my committees and those same bills are presented to us and policies, that I know where it's coming from, and that if it needs to be countered, there's a, some of us that are willing to stick our necks out there and counter it and get the real strong debates going, so, and, and I enjoy that, I, I enjoy the information that I get and, and try to bring it back. I will say that we had a visit Monday from our Regional Water Authority, Mr. John Woodley, regarding some bills that they're trying to sponsor, having to do with water reliability, and our small community and area are becoming more and more important for even the Sacramento, greater Sacramento area, for their reliability on good access, access to good clean water and the amount that they need. So, we're being included more and more into the, those discussions, and so, we have some bills that we're gonna be reviewing and currently are for supporting good things for us also. We did discuss also SB one in, it was Ontario, and so, the Ontario-California SB one was discussed, it was actually being broken out and released it while we were there, so, that was quite an interesting discussion. We have one that's SB two-three-one, which is trying to change the storm water into sewer water as a definition, and then they'll be able to avoid going to the two-eighteen process for funding, it'll be just a simple majority, there's, and that's a split one, that was almost fifty-fifty on the concerns of that. LA would have to spend approximately three to four billion dollars if this was to be put through and they were having to treat their storm water, think of treating storm water to the degree that they're gonna try to do. It's, and it's extreme for, for many areas, so there, that's still going on. SB five-five-eight, right now I don't have them in front of me, but I'll be bringing them to staff to do some specific review as I organize them to present, and then, you know, we'll, we'll consider support or not support in any way with letters or comments through our legislators or independently. Let's see, I did attend the chamber government meeting this morning, and James Gallagher came in, or sent them in and discussed SB one and a few other items also that were in there, but he had to get out and get down to the Capitol for voting and being high position in some of the committees that are considering water issues. Victim witness celebration today and, and awards was a wonderful thing to see, and then the fact that our two counties and all of our cities are working so closely together on making victims and victim witness a high priority, to make those people feel safe to be able to witness even violence on somebody, to feel safe to report it and get it taken care of well. So, it's, it's great to see that as a high priority in our community. With that, I have nothing else except everybody, again, get on, get that app, YC three-one-one, it is essential if you really wanna get something done quickly, that's the way to go, and it will happen. Excited about the Bears, and as John has said, I will definitely be attending our Yuba City Local Bears games as often as I possibly can. With that, does the staff have anything else? Okay? Meeting adjourned.